Let the religions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone out to bring our session of city council for November 4th, 2019. We have a full council, so we go on roll call everybody 100%. We don't have a public hearing scheduled this evening. I need a motion on the agenda and consent agenda.
So moved second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda this meeting and...
Can we amend it to include the resolution?
Oh, that's right, I gotta go back to that. I had it all written down to do that. I got so excited about the consent agenda. We'll start over. Not the pledge, just this part. I need to amend the agenda because the resolution that was decided upon at the last city council meeting when the plans were done for the Stargazer RV Park has been prepared. It's Resolution 702 and it will be introduced under item H of the...
So move the approval of the agenda as amended.
Okay.
Second.
The agenda and the consent agenda have been approved as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We don't have a presentation tonight. We'll go to department reports and we'll start with Noah.
So we attended trunk or treat. We passed out a lot of candy. Great, seemed like a great event. Everything went well for us there. We were busy last night, helped Row 7 with a structured fire. We had good response from our crews, Row 7 as well. I believe they said 21,000 gallons of water was put on that house. A lot of water to shuttle. Anyway, with that being said, we also have had some issues with people plugging in multiple heaters on one circuit of their electrical panel or something like that. But just want to remind everybody, smoke alarms, make sure you have smoke alarms, make sure you plug in your heaters in a safe manner and have your heaters and wood stoves and everything like that cleaned out. This is precaution.
That's good advice. This is a time when fires can really, really come up. It's a terrible, terrible time for a family. Reggie?
Well, good evening.
Forward.
So we've said a few things for tonight. First, we were also at trunk or treat and we also passed out a lot of candy. I think this is probably the most people we've seen at trunk or treat. We had two officers down there, Officer Mike Kenny, and we also had Officer Kelsey Shelton down there. And again, it was a great event. For Halloween night, you just never know what we're gonna have for calls for service. We actually had a pretty slow night. We did have one domestic that night, but overall, it was a pretty quiet night for law enforcement. So I think that was extremely good. We have some officers, our last two weeks have been gone to training. Last Wednesday, we were at a domestic violence training that was in White Salmon for eight hours. All of our officers besides two were able to attend that. They did our hours in for this year. It was put on by our prosecuting attorney's office and also the Virginia White Salmon Police Department. And they had Mark Nguyen, who's from Tennessee, come up and taught them a lot of really good subjects, mostly on the investigation of domestic violence, make sure that we see the full picture of it. The history of the domestic violence, taking photos, statements, and again, he really stressed on regulation during domestic violence and really taught the officers a lot of really valuable information. That's a pretty major issue that's going on throughout the United States and we want to make sure that we get that right and be able to protect the victims of that. We have four officers gone this entire week to CIT training. CIT training is crisis intervention training and again, this is for people who are in crisis with mentally, that are mentally ill, that are going through a serious situation. This is something that we're dealing with more and more in the police department and how to de-escalate, a lot of that will be de-escalation trainings and ways to see what they're going on with them and how to try to help them and to give them the right resources and trying to keep them out of jail and get them resources with comprehensive mental health here in town. We have, just a quick update on where we're at for reports, calls for services here. In 2018, we would have had 2,440 cases up to today. This year, in 2019, we have 2,910 cases. So we're at 470 cases from last year. So that's a pretty significant increase for us for calls for service. I kind of broke down the last seven days of, so you kind of see what kind of calls that we're going to in a seven day period. We've actually, this last seven days has been really good for the police department, but these are the calls that we're kind of going on. We've had 13 suspicious calls, that's suspicious persons or vehicles. We've gone to seven alarm calls. A lot of those are burglar alarms, alarms that are in houses, a lot of them are in schools that we respond to. We've only had four animal calls. That's actually down from what we normally do in a seven day period. We had two drug calls, one was arrested. We did three welfare checks. Welfare checks is when we go and we'll check on somebody who calls in, maybe an elderly parent and they haven't heard from them, they'll just want us to go and check on them to make sure that they're okay and we'll have them call them. We had five domestics in the last seven days. We had five disorderly conducts. We had one theft, I believe it was a shoplift. We had one burglary. We had six citizen assists. That's everything from changing tires to helping somebody who's locked out. We had one missing person, which we located. Four harassment calls, three frauds, one sex offense, one runaway juvenile, one weapon offense, seven civil problems, one fire call, and six medical calls that we responded to. So that kind of gives you a look of a snapshot of a seven day period in the Goldendale Police Department. I just think it's valuable for you kind of hear, and I just wanted to know, you know, this has been a really good week for us. Really, there was only one felony in that, that we were really investigating, that is a legitimate one. And right now, our people that we've arrested and actually put in jail is down. So everything's going really, really well for the police department. And really, we only had one theft in the last seven days and that's not bad for a population of our size. So I think officers are doing really a good job. They're patrolling, they're making a lot of contacts, they're being very proactive, and I think things are going really good in the police department. So, sorry, that's all happening.
Thank you, Reggie. I wouldn't make that a good week, you've got so many things that you've dealt with.
Very busy, yeah.
Connie, anything for you?
No.
Okay. We'll go on now to council business. First item is the 2020 preliminary budget and budget message, and that's gonna be presented by Larry Bellamy.
Okay, in the budget message for 2020, I've noted some highlights for the 2020 budget. The particular, this is the preliminary budget and it appropriates, it's the document that appropriates money for spending purposes for the city. And the appropriation monies will be about $6 million. On top of that $6 million is about 1.6 million that is carried over in cash reserves. So you have to have money to operate, so you gotta carry a little bit over while you receive the money and then expend the money. So the actual dollars being spent will be about $6 million. It'll be spent on things like debt service, capital LA projects, transfers between funds, and then funding the operations of the city, including police, law, justice, fire, code enforcement administration, finance, streets, parks and recreation, tourism, and water And so we receive, that's how the money is spent and to support the money being spent, of course, we have revenues and our revenues come from, again, cash carryover balance, so it's remaining about the same. The cash carryover balance projected going into 2020 will be about 1.6 million, same as the amount going out at the end of the year in 2020. So we do receive capital grant funds of... Oh, that's the revenue, so we received capital grant funds of .5 million and that is the airport capital grant that we got from the state. So that's what that one is. We received taxes of 2.5, charges for services of 2.5, and another half a million used for transfers between funds. So the transfers between funds is primarily the money that we take from the current expense fund and then transfer over to the streets and parks fund. We have to keep them all separate and so that's the way that those particular funds receive their revenues from transfers from the current expense fund. So again, the other capital projects will be primarily, besides the airport, project is the capital out and they set aside for the water sewer system of about $125,000. Probably, we're not sure what the list of projects is right now, but we're working on that and we'll have a list in the final budget document. Then on the street improvement side, the city made application for Byers Reconstruction of Byers Avenue from North Mill to North Columbus. And that application was made earlier this fall, but we'll know, award decisions will be sent out by November 15th. So by the next council meeting, we should know whether or not we've been able to receive an award for that particular project. We will also, with that project, we will include the replacement of the water line. So again, that $125,000 that we set aside for water and sewer improvements may go to that project. So we're just kind of waiting to see what happens before we put everything all together. As a side note, a couple of notes of interest as far as building projects within the city of Goldendale. We did finish in 2019 the renovation of the observatory and we actually had complimentary construction of the Stargazer RV Park, both of which we think will enhance and increase the tourism activity in Goldendale. And then we are working on the final steps to issue a building permit for the Cleticet County Administrative Services Building there at the old, I always call it the Old Hotel Park a lot, but not everybody knows that anymore.
A lot of people's older people do.
So that's gonna be quite an extensive project. It's gonna take a lot of patience on the part of our community while that one's being constructed. But it's really gonna be a nice addition to our community. But I would recommend that we continue to work on this and that the council again refer to this budget document and the preparation of the 2020 budget, that we refer to the budget committee for further review and in-depth analysis and the more detailed work that needs to be done.
Well, Larry, when can we make comments on a couple, maybe an item or two? Do we do that during the...
Sure, you can do it anytime you want to. We can do it at the public hearing time or right now, because if you do it right now, of course, we can adjust the...
Well, just one quick question. Maybe I was told, but on the firemen's, maybe Noah could explain this, on the volunteer fireman, you have the retirement and is the city paying for 100% of the retirement?
Yes.
Okay, okay. I wasn't sure, you may have told me that sometime ago, but that was good. Then also on the lifeline, all members are included on the lifeline?
That is a request that's been made this year and we are gonna consider that in the budget.
Well, all the fire departments do that, they cover their firemen.
Sounds like a great idea to me.
Yeah, you get a special discount too.
Oh, do you?
Yeah.
Okay.
You could put it in the preliminary budget and I think it covers their immediate families too.
Yes, it does, yes. Covers their families and if they're still 22 years old or whatever, if they're still old, something like that.
The other, I'll just mention this too, it was announced, of course, at the last meeting that WOGAP was interested in pursuing some contribution on the part of the city. We've actually received quite a bit of comment on that, the mayor has, I don't know if you wanna...
Well, I can explain a little bit of it. I've never had a phone call complaining about the food bank here in Goldendale, the WOGAP food bank, but I had five of them today, three phone calls and two visitors. And their biggest concern, they had no problem with the money that we would be giving for food, they were just worried that that money would be used for a truck or for something else related with WOGAP. They just wanted focus from food in Goldendale and an acceptable quality of food. Every one of them was like that. I think it's probably one person that was really upset about it and called her friends and I got all the calls, but they were nice, very nice people and I can understand their concern and frustration sometimes. And what we are intending to do if the council approves the money that's been set for the WOGAP will be to set a contract that spells out specifically what that money is to be used for. It's gotta be specific to food and I think we can do that. I'm gonna be making a good many more visits to the food bank here just because of the things that they talked about. All of those things were spread over the last three years, so it's kind of hard to know what was going on now as much as what was going on three years ago, but we're gonna just be looking into it and try to help solve that problem. That's all I have, Larry.
Okay, I just want to remind everybody that during the budget process, we will have a couple of public hearings coming up on the second meeting in November on the 18th and then also the first meeting in December on the 2nd of December. And then, of course, the budget has to be approved by December 31st. We hope we don't go that long, but that is the deadline. And I guess I did mention that I would like to meet with the budget committee, I was wondering if the budget committee would be available on the 25th of this month, which would be Monday night, the fourth Monday night of the morning. You good? Randy and Michelle?
I think I'm gonna have to double check.
11:25.
What time?
7 o'clock. Yes, that's all I have.
Well, that's later.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's the next step. Thank you, Larry, and I know the budget committee will be going over the budget figures here as well as Larry's report to get a good feel for what the budget is attempting to provide. The next item on the agenda is resolutions and we have a resolution number 702 and it has to do with drilling a well at the Stargazer RV Park here in Goldendale. That was discussed and requested of the council at the last council meeting. And this resolution's been prepared and reviewed by the Mossburgers to see that it was what they needed to do what they needed.
Actually, I prepared it and we did send it to them for review and approval and he came in today and said it looked good to him. And so I said I would add it to the, I said I would propose to the mayor to add it to the council agenda tonight for action. So it is for, to drill a non-domestic irrigation water well on the property that will be phase one and phase two of the RV park.
Move to approve Resolution number 702, a resolution authorizing Stargazer's RV Park to drill a non-domestic irrigation water well within the city limits of Goldendale.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution number 702 regarding the Stargazer's RV Park drilling a non-domestic irrigation well within the city limits of Goldendale. Is there any discussion or questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, thank you. The next item is reports of officers and city administrator. And begin with Larry and then go to the council and then I've got a couple of things I would like to bring up.
Back to me again?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, I just want to touch base on a couple of things that are gonna happen at the next council meeting. We, in addition to having a public hearing on the 2020 budget, we'll also have a public hearing on revenue sources related to the property tax revenue and I'll kind of explain that, how that works. And also, I've asked Gordy Kelsey to come by and share with us the project at the Cleticet County Services Building. I thought it would be a good idea for him to, it's gonna be a major thing, so I wanted him to share with the council a little bit of the timetable, a little bit about what they're planning to do and what kind of construction effort it really is for that services building. There's gonna be other buildings that will be demolished, so this can be used for parking purposes and he's gonna touch on parking as well, because that's gonna be a concern and has been a concern of ours as well as the community. So I've asked him to be at the next council meeting to go over that. And then I wanted to also remind the council about a couple of airport, our committee meetings. The airport committee meeting now is set for Tuesday. It was originally set for Monday, but that's Veterans Day and there was too many activities going on that made that a real conflict. So it's now Tuesday, the 12th, from 7 to 9 and we will have the consultant here. He has worked out the numbers and he's been working with Ty Ross quite a bit on, using his numbers that he made available and they've come to consensus, I guess, so that we can now present that to the airport board, the airport committee. And so I think it should be a pretty important one. I'd like to get from that meeting direction to move forward and start the planning process because we're getting a little bit behind already and we need to start that planning process. But I think you will all be happy to know, I think we have a good project that will use up all of the money, probably, but we think it's the best use for the money at this time. And so we'll see if the airport committee agrees with us and we'll go from there. Then we are receiving, we did receive, today was the last day to receive tourism applications and we're gonna have, we were gonna have that on the 11th of November, but again, Veterans Day was gonna be a conflict, so we moved that to the 18th of November, which will be before the council meeting and we'll have it from 6 to 7. And that will be the meeting where they just come in and make their presentations, their formal presentations for the requests that they made. Anybody have any concerns about that being enough time?
It might be borderline, how many applications do we have?
I don't know what the number is. Shelley was dealing with it and I ran out the door and didn't ask her before that. I think it's probably less than 10, probably more than five, probably somewhere between five and seven.
So about what we had last year?
Yeah. Do you want to just move it to 5:30, do you think?
Let's move it to 5:00. If that's okay with the rest of the...
Yeah. 5:00 is fine with me.
Okay. In this way, if there's a, you know, we have any excess time, we can take a break.
That's true, you can always do that. Okay, you got that?
No, 3:20.
Okay. Okay, the only other thing, a couple of things I'll mention is the broadband planning. I've received the final report on that and I'm reviewing that for approval by the council. And I think that's about it.
Thank you, Larry.
Oh, I did forget one thing. I said I would do that later. So the city's Action Days Conference is scheduled for January 28th through the 29th. This is the one where we go to Olympia and it is a short session this year, so it comes earlier in the year, the longer session, they usually meet sometime in February, but this is a short session and it's a pretty short window. Usually, we're gonna, depending on how it lines up, it could be going up like on a Wednesday, staying Wednesday night, coming back late on Thursday or something like that, but whenever the 28th and 29th is. So all I want to do is I want to introduce that idea to you, check your calendars and then we can start planning for registrations and vehicles to get us up there and all of that.
Barring weather.
Barring weather. We did go one year, we did not go one year because of the weather.
I should.
I think it was last year, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yes, if it's really bad weather, we will decide not to go, I'm sure, but we'll plan for it. Okay, you don't need to tell me right now, just have it ready to go at the next council meeting if you can, state your calendar was that far ahead.
They could probably call Sandy too.
They could always call Sandy, that's true. She's the one that organizes that.
I'll try to make it, I think I can, I believe I can make it.
Okay, you got that?
Of course, go ahead and put me down too, if I'm reelected.
I read the voter's pamphlet, I know what's going on.
There's a lot of write-ins. Yeah. Mickey Mouse doesn't count.
Now that I did that one, I'm done.
All right, thank you. We'll have the report of our city councilman and we'll start first with Justin.
Thanks. I don't really have much, just wanted to wish everyone good luck in the election. See you here next year. That's it.
I also don't have much, other than I missed both the October meetings due to volleyball coaching conflicts and I'm glad to be back. It was a good little season with my middle school volleyballers and winning season, but you know, I most certainly would have rather been here instead of on a school bus, driving around the region, but it was great, so glad to be back, looking forward to all that's coming up here in November.
True. Go ahead.
Are we seeing Baja hold repaired before the end of the year?
Boy, I will touch base with them again. I talked to them about it after last council meeting, so I will talk to them again about it again. Sorry about that.
Still like the Baja 500 out there.
Yeah.
That's all I have there.
Some people think that's fun.
Yeah.
Not many though. Chen?
I was just thinking we should get him a truck of asphalt, just to show...
No problem, my wife will be out there doing it.
I don't really have anything.
Andy?
Well, a question I have for Larry, last week, we had the issue with the tent down with the dirty cover all, I think. What was the full outcome of that? What was the, just so everyone can know, I mean, I kind of heard bits and pieces, I haven't heard the whole outcome of that.
We decided that the particular cover, the canopy cover they were using is more suited for a temporary use and so, and furthermore, we did talk to the owner of the property as well. And in fact, that's who ultimately would be responsible for it and felt like, we made the decision that in this particular application, it should be more of a temporary use. So anytime there's an event, like a community days, we would allow it, farmer's market, we would allow it. So we tried to figure out where we'd been drawing the line and so that's kind of where we felt the line was. The particular application that she was using was more residential and very more commercial in nature, so we had a very good discussion with the property owner and she understood, met with both Jeff and myself in the office and came to that, that was the resolution we came to.
Good. Next question is with Jeff, is he gonna have some kind of report for us anytime soon?
Yeah, I think so.
I don't think he's ever been to the council of Indiana, I don't think I've actually met him.
I will invite him to come.
Sure.
That's it. Okay. Phil?
Well, I just want to, I have things to give to both the fire department and the police department for this week and also Nancy. This week, this week I had mentioned I was going to go chaperone a bunch of juveniles at Nationals. It was a great week. I always come back and press with, with that group. They had 14, 14 kids, some from the middle school, some from the high school. They were awarded a national recognition for their chapter, given three stars for their 15 projects they did throughout the year, some which involved public education for the fire department. So out of 65,000 individuals at conference, junior high brought, I believe, three silver stars or three silver medals. High school brought one gold medal, which is huge accomplishment for the small community like ours. And I mean, it involved a lot of learning for them, going to classes, competing against all these chapters. So with those accomplishments, I contacted the fire department, the police department and as well as rural seven fire and the county and kind of put together a little welcome party on Saturday when we arrived back to town. They were greeted at the South Columbus exit and given a winner's welcome back to town, all the way to the high school where we had parents and committee members welcome the group, which is huge because again, some of them are not sports kids. The sports always get all the attention. These kids are, you know, good, great kids and I think some of them have aspirations of becoming teachers themselves, which I would hope that they come back to our community.
Yeah.
They, I had, I talked to one, one senior, not my child. She's got a full-time job, does three sports, a straight A student, and that's all these other clubs on top of that. And still manages just life just as well as anybody else. So very, very impressed with them and thanks to the department, the kids were super excited as soon as they, they saw everybody, what was going on and I mean, the buzz just got loud and it was just great. It was great.
That's good.
Thank you.
Good job.
Good event. Was that from FFA?
That's a fake.
Oh, it's awesome. Congrats.
Yeah, thank you very much. I just, well, last Friday, we had a Senator Murray staff person was here in Goldendale. We took it down to see the bomb storage site and after that, then we come back and we had a meeting here at the mayor's office and we talked over a number of projects, potential projects that we're looking at here in the city of Goldendale. And also have we heard anything from the attorney or from the insurance on the U for the park, the building at the park?
Haven't heard any.
Okay. That's all I have.
That's all. I've got a few things that I'd like you to know about. One, I had a very interesting and very positive interview with a newspaper reporter from Yakima. I guess it's the Yakima Herald, I believe, but about the progress being made and the opening of the observatory and what our expectations were, what we were hoping would happen after the observatory is in full operation. And it was, it was good to talk back and forth about that and, and look at how positive that is. It's, it's literally a world-class telescope that we have there now. And when you look at the building, it seems to match the telescope. It's a very, very nice facility. I think they will be opening on the soft, kind of a soft opening, November 11th, I believe, because that's the day that mercury will be going across the face of the sun. And it only happens every 32 years, so not all of us will be here the next time. So we thought we'd want to see it once. The other thing, Myla and I both attended the Washington State Community Airports Association meeting in Leavenworth last week. And we just, we got there Wednesday night and came back Thursday, but there was a tremendous amount of discussion about what you can do if you aren't an FAA airport. And it was kind of reassuring that we're on the right path. We don't have to go to the far more complicated layout and requirements. And they also introduced two drafts. One is a manual on runway maintenance and inspection so you know, you can test your runway and keep up with improvements that it needs. It was, it's very good, it's something that they're putting out for the first time. And the other is on the general aviation. Both of them we'll have out here, we'll make sure you have a chance to go through their drafts. So there's a chance also to, to have a chance to comment on what their plans are, but it follows the FAA real, FAA rules very closely, but you don't have those heavy regulations on top of that. I think it was a very smart move the way they've set it up. But it will help us in this improvements of the airport, operating it and, and improving the runway and other safety items on that. So it's a, it's a very good manual. It's an end draft, so they'll be looking for the comments of flyers and people involved at the airport. So we'll make sure everybody in the committee at least has a copy of it. While Myla and I were on our way and I've, we, I went, we went separately, but as I was approaching the city limits of Tappanish, we were listening to a local radio station and they announced two shootings, one of them fatal in Tappanish that day and the same, that night, and a shooting with serious injuries in Union Gap. That's not even getting to the big city of Yakima. And Reggie and I have talked a lot and Reggie watches the gang activity in that part of the state to make sure they don't feel they can do anything in Goldendale period. And we have to all be alert to anything of that nature because these gangs are very, very dangerous. They fight, they use guns and there's a lot of victims in the wake of these gang fights. So I just think we all need to do our part to help the police department and watch them for anything unusual and suspicious. So that they're on top of it. We have a very strong police force, very strong, and that's helping us to keep them over the mountain and we, that's where we want them. We don't need them over here. Those are the only items I have. The next item on the agenda is public comment. And anybody here for public comment, please give your name and address and come up to the podium. You have three minutes, I think you'll be okay on three minutes.
Dennis Schroder, 363 Ribrock Road, Goldendale. I would like to comment on the city tourism funding process. The following comments are my own opinion. They do not represent any organization. In 2018, I offered video evidence to the mayor and the city administrator of what I considered to be a direct threat.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor. This has been gone over time and time again.
It was last year, I remember.
Yeah, can we shut this down, please? And tell them to just move on?
Am I not allowed? My first time at R.A.T.
No, you're not.
No, you, you can, just this, this point we've covered, but if you have other items you want to raise.
No, I would like to talk about this because it affects this year's, it affects this year's funding.
Okay, because we're considering the funding next, next meeting.
I know, but the process has started.
Yeah.
I, I don't, I don't understand why I'm not allowed to discuss it. Obviously Guy feels threatened about it. I mean, but what's the problem with transparency?
No, we prefer the transparency, but in a point of order, we're in a very different spot.
I would kind of disagree with that, but.
Well, we follow Robert's rules here. And the point of order takes precedence over what you're saying.
I would prefer that the mayor preside over the meeting.
Well, I do, it's, that's a.
I'm sorry, but he can have a meeting with you and Larry and discuss with.
You already passed.
Well, there's obviously an issue between you two and I think that something needs to be dealt with and not maybe here at the meeting maybe? Maybe you have a meeting with Larry and them and.
And we could even sit down tonight and try to get this clarified.
So basically you're denying me my three minutes. I mean, if you tell me I can't do it, then I guess I can't do it.
No, I think, I think because of the nature of a point of order, it's what stops it. It's an unfortunate thing, I don't like them, but they come. I'd like to.
Well, then if you want to discuss it after the meeting, then.
Yeah, as long as you want.
That's what we'll do.
Be happy to do it, okay.
And that's coming up here very shortly?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Dennis. Anyone else here for, for public comment? Okay, if nothing else, we'll adjourn the meeting.
So who?
Moved and seconded to adjourn the city council meeting, November 4th, 2019. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.